Good evening, folks. Good evening. Hope everyone is well today. We are now calling our meeting to order, a city council meeting, July 16, 7:00 P.M. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Diana Dama.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cabo. Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jimmy Clinton.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we stand, please? City Council?
Heavenly Father, we do bless and praise you and thank you for this new day. We thank you for this meeting and those that are gathered here this evening. We ask for wisdom and direction, Lord, on how we can best serve the citizens of this great city and how you can show forth your power and honor through us. Speak to us and through us as we go forth today in ministering policy and procedures, those things that will benefit the betterment of all mankind. So we honor you and thank you for your presence here today. We give you all the glory and praise, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let me proceed. Thank you. All right, council, you have the city council agenda in front of you here. Now we'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, one-
Yes, sir.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Public comments. Is that normally where we have it today or is that...
For because of the public hearings, yes, sir.
Because of the public hearing, it's moved. Okay. Satisfied.
All right. Okay, seeing no changes, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval of the agenda for July 16.
All right, properly moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
I second it, but with a few changes. Under the council comments, the name Sarah Toering.
Are we doing the agenda?
Okay. Yeah, I second it.
All right, so promptly moved and seconded. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Now we'll move to the minutes. Council, I'll give you an opportunity to take a few seconds here to look at the minutes from the city council meeting for July 3. Yes, sir.
I have a question of the attorney. When of order. If you did not attend the meeting on that particular day, are you permitted to vote on it?
Yes. As far as if you did not attend, if you wish to approve the minutes, even though you weren't there, you can vote on it. Or you don't have to vote on it, but you have to vote. You can't excuse yourself.
It's just that, well, okay, I'll double-check Roberts on that because my understanding is that you are attesting that what happened at the meeting is accurate with the minutes. If you were not there, how do you attest that what happened at the meeting is accurate with the minutes?
Now, if it were an attestation, I would tell you not to sign it. But if it's a motion in order to approve minutes, even though you weren't there, you know, you have to vote. So you can vote aye or you can say no. I mean, because you weren't there. It's however you want to do it.
Okay. See, I need to know.
All right. Gustaf? All right, councilwoman, you seem as though you have some changes to the minutes.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, under council comments, under my name, Sarah Toering, the spelling of her name is T.O.E.R.I.N.G., and she's actually the legal counsel. I think you put down a land bank expert, but she's actually the legal counsel. And then under, you have Al Terrell for the code enforcement officer. It should actually be Al Farrell. And then...
Which one is that?
Look under-
First paragraph.
Comments, first paragraph.
Me, too.
Yes. Yeah, it should be Al Farrell. And then the other, just a quick question, Mr. Mayor, am I allowed to ask her a question?
Sure.
Madam Clerk, under, when we update the agenda at a meeting after we've already posted it on the website, my constituents want to know, when do we update the agenda with any added or deleted items for accuracy?
I just put after they're passed, whatever you pass.
Right, because what's on the website now, like, say, for example, if we add in an item, if we add an item to the agenda today, it would not be on our website. So the agenda then would be different from what we've already posted. So when do we go back?
I don't.
Okay.
Only put it in the summary showing that you passed that at the meeting, and it goes in the minutes that it was added to the minutes. It's not updated on the agenda because the agenda is as printed that day as what it is. So in the minutes, we reflect that you added something.
Okay, and that brings me to my one other question. Under Georgia's, Georgia laws, section 50, 14 dot 1 dash 1 E, number 2, it states that the summary, my constituents want to know if we're posting the summary minutes in the 48 hours and are within the two days, the summary minutes, not the minutes, the summary minutes.
The minutes, summaries are posted the next day. I post them the next day out with the agenda, the agenda's there, and the minutes are posted. The summary is only what was, whether you approved it or you didn't.
Okay, so the answer to my question is they're posted the next day. So from today-
If not, if I'm not here, like tomorrow-
Yes, ma'am.
They'll be posted Wednesday.
Okay, so they'll be posted Wednesday.
They're posted within the allotted time that I have to post them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, council, any other changes that you see?
I do, just one little, small change in the third paragraph where it says, he said the second community leadership, it should be second Saturday. That's all. Just add Saturday after second. And that's it.
And I will tell you, I did these from my notes because I did not have the minutes transferred over, so these are from my handwritten notes.
Yeah, and I apologize because I didn't read this before I got here today, the minutes, and had I read it, I would have called you prior to the meetings.
One other question on page, the last page of the minutes where Mayor Larry spoke on his time with the interns, and it says illegal parties?
Say what?
Says illegal parties, yep. I don't, is that correct?
I think she was making reference to the illegal mansion parties.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Illegal mansion parties.
Right.
Said illegal parties.
Not attorneys.
It's the illegal party.
Okay, okay. That's good, council? All right, then I'll take that motion with the allotted changes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the city council meeting minutes for July 3, 2018 with the stated changes.
All right.
Second it.
Properly moved and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved. We're moving to our presentation section of our meeting, and we're going to start with a PowerPoint presentation from the South Decatur Tribe.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's a distinct pleasure to be here today to represent our organization, the South Decatur Tribe. My name is Willie Slaton. I serve as the CEO and co-founder of the organization. And what we are, are grassroots, homegrown, nonprofit youth sports organization right here in South Decatur County, specifically Brownsville Park, which is within Stonecrest City. So today, I wanted to go through a brief presentation. I'm not going to take up too much of your time, but I wanted to let you guys know who we are, what we're about, and the great things that we're doing right here in the community. Our tribe founders again, myself, Willie Slaton, Cal Moody, and Cedric Parker, they're in the back there. We are products of Decatur County. Went to Brownsville Elementary School. Cal went to Murphy Cantler. Cedric went to Bowie. We all graduated from Martin Luther King High School right here in South Decatur, and also all attended Valdosta State University, where we graduated from. And back there in Valdosta is where we came up with the idea to use a lot of the knowledge and experience that we gained right here in our community and bring it back home. We all work corporate jobs. Cedric is an educator, but we wanted to do more to impact our society, so we decided to create this organization called the Tribe. We created, of course, we needed the help, so we solicited some friends, former classmates from high school as well as college, who are helping us each and every day impact the kids in this community. Our co-founders, of course, William Watkins, he's in the back as well, he's director of baseball development. Brittany Wilson, she's out of town and working today, but she's our public relations coordinator. Dariy Hopkins is our business coordinator, and Ingrid Ali is in the back as well, she's our business manager. So the tribe, what are we, who are we, and what are we about? We have three pillars of excellence that we stand on, starting with education, community service, and high-level sports. Education. Education is huge for us, especially as former baseball players. Every NCAA Division I school only has 11.7 full scholarships through their entire baseball team. So without a strong athletics, academics background, you're not able to go to school for free. And that's our number one goal, to put as many kids in this community as we can, make the college for free. So for our tribe scholars, our students who receive all A's, complete satisfactory conduct on their report card for the semester, we represent them publicly in front of our entire organization and community. We also have some of our friends who are current major league baseball players. Sign autographed baseballs and gifts and send them to the kids, as well as a nice video each and every year. Community service. We have several community service programs that we participate, we actually facilitate each and every single year. Our key is the annual holiday give-back, which we do with the 1st of December each and every year. But we actually have the kids in our program take items that they have raised money for, which are hygiene products, underwear, different type of needs for those less fortunate, they pass them out themselves in the community. As you can see, we've taken almost 100 people downtown Atlanta and had the kids right there on the front lines as small as age five handing out items to the less fortunate. Also, this picture here on the far right hand side, we did a holiday on a Hurricane Harvey release drive this past year, where we filled up a 26-foot box truck full of goods from everything from televisions to socks, clothing items, food, down into Houston directly with another organization that we partner with. So those are some of the community service things that we do with kids. Lastly, high-level sports. We're very serious about our baseball, and we have some very, very talented student athletes in this community that represent for South Decatur County as well as Stonecrest across the nation. We have big tournament wins all over the country, spanning from Las Vegas, Panama City, Florida, Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. We also have a team that will be going to New York next week, and they're actually going to be playing live on CBS Sports and MLB.com on Wednesday, August 25 at 10:00 a.m. But we're making noise for our community all across the nation. Our organization currently, we are comprised of 78 student athletes, all from the ages of 5 through 12, and our goal is to go a complete full cycle, 3 through 18, leading them all the way up into college. We're ever-growing. We started with 10 kids in August of 2015. Now you see, we have almost 80. And our current focus is baseball, but our system is something that has proven to be effective, and we are looking to extend to other sports as soon as this fall. Here's a list of places that we've played, and this is currently just from 2018, all the way again from Las Vegas, we're going to Long Island, New York next week, Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, Panama City, Florida, Fort Myers, Florida, and all cities in Georgia from Valdosta up to Rome. Here are a few of our community partners that we have partnerships with who assist us. Underwear, baseball is a very, very expensive sport. Not only do we cost a tournament entry, but as well as travel on our parents, all of the different places that we go, so we utilize a lot of our partners within the community right here at home. Not only do great things for the kids, focus on their education and community service, but we're pretty good. We work really hard, we push the kids up mentally as well as physically, and they have responded with a lot of success in 2019. Notably, National Youth Baseball Championship, we won that in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. Strikeout Breast Cancer Tournament, we won that this year in Douglasville, Georgia. The Las Vegas Memorial Day Bash Championship, we won that in Las Vegas, Nevada. The Grand Slam World Series Championship, just happened last week, won in Panama City, Florida. The Georgia versus Florida Showdown, the top four teams from Georgia and Florida coming together for a tournament, we won undefeated, won that in Valdosta, Georgia. Also, the DHA Invitational Championship right here in Atlanta. There are a few more pictures of our student athletes. And that's the end of our presentation. Thank you, guys, for your time. Wanted to thank Mayor Larry. Time for your support of our organization.
One, two, three.
We have something special for the young man. I, it seemed like yesterday I just saw your play when you were like 70 years old. You're almost 30. So, you know, the most important thing that I saw with you is that if I didn't get the presentation in banquet, and they had eight, nine, or 10 of them, one in the corner, it was good. Your leadership in this and what you're doing is just outstanding. Well, let's give him a round of applause. We have something for you all. Better than cash. All right, just one confirmation for the city council. Whereas the South Decatur Tribe was founded on August 8, 2015 by Willie Slaton, Cal Moody, Cedric Parker, and each of them in baseballs at early age, and whereas the South Decatur Tribe is formed to have skilled characters and skills that each three million games were visiting in baseball, and whereas the South Decatur Tribe operates through three pillars of education, community service, and high-level sports achievement geared toward students ages 5 through 12, and whereas the South Decatur Tribe won several championships. I want you all to hear this now, including the National Youth Baseball Championship, the Georgia versus Florida Showdown, be it Florida, anything, the Las Vegas Memorial Day Bash Championship, and most recently, the 2018 Grand Slam World Series Championship. And whereas the South Decatur Tribe, who are nationally renowned, makes its home at Brownsville Park and Arabian Mountain High School and practice field here in Stonecrest, Georgia. Therefore, we have to claim that the mayor and city council honor and congratulate the South Decatur Tribe, who by recognition, Monday, May 16, the South Decatur Tribe being a champion.
I appreciate your indulgence on that. That is my particularly favorite thing to do when we recognize and award young people for showing, even the younger folks, how it's to be done. So I appreciate your indulgence on that. Now we'll have a presentation of the audit report by Malden and Jenkins.
Good afternoon.
All right.
Absence of our city manager, Michael Harris, who's traveling this week. My name is Audrey Mays. I am the accounting manager for the city of Stonecrest. The finance department has completed our fiscal year 2017 audit and comprehensive annual financial report, better known as the CAFR. Tonight, we have a staff member from our auditing firm, Malden and Jenkins LLC, Mr. Adam Frawley, to make the presentation to you, mayor and city council. Both reports will be posted on our website upon your review and approval. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of trophies, I kind of look at this as somewhat of a trophy in my book, but I'm here to present the city's first annual financial, or this year an annual, but being with the year of incorporation, but the first financial audit of the city of Stonecrest. And you should have in your packets, as Ms. Mays mentioned, I'm glad she went ahead and spelled it out for me. I'm going to call it a CAFR quite a bit, conference venue financial report. And then also, what we call our auditors discussion and analysis, and that's the presentation that it really summarizes the results of the audit and some of the items that we noted as part of the audit. I'm going to go through this because it kind of says everything I need it to say, if you want to follow along with me there. So on page two, this kind of just introduces the firm a little bit more to you. We were the external auditors. We're independent CPAs performing the audit, and our firm is Malden and Jenkins. We have a large governmental practice. We're a full-service CPA firm with a specialty niche included in governmental practice area. You'll see there, we serve about 400 governments annually. 100 of those are cities in the southeast, mostly in Georgia. Myself, down at the bottom of the page, I was the engagement lead partner. We also had two other partners involved on the audit, one of quality assurance partner, Joel Black, and the other, James Benz, who is audit services partner and was out here during the conduct of the audit. Turning to page three, as I mentioned, we're a full-service CPA firm. These are some of the other industries we serve, some of the other services that we And then on to page four. So the financial statements are the responsibility of the city. Annually, you have to prepare a set of financial statements in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and submit those financial statements to the state of Georgia within six months of year-end. Our responsibility was to perform audit tests, perform audit procedures, in order to render an opinion as to the fairness of these financial statements. We did do that, and we issued an unmodified audit report. Lamest terms, that's clean opinion. What that means is we believe, based on our test work, that these financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects for the fiscal period ended December 31, 2017. On the next page, five, this talks about what a CAFR is. As I mentioned, the city has to do a financial report at the end of each year and submit that to the state of Georgia in accordance with state law. A CAFR is over and above what the state requires. It includes an introductory section, you'll see there in the bullets on page five, and also includes a statistical section that will become quite robust for the city, the stat section. It'll go for 10 years. That's what's required by GASB. So as you accumulate the years, those facts, both financial and non-financial, will accumulate in the back of this CAFR and be a wealth of information for citizens of Stonecrest. So the CAFR, a lot of work goes into it, again, over and above what's required in the state of Georgia, and so it is not the norm for a city to prepare a CAFR. In fact, the city of Stonecrest is in the minority when it comes to those that prepare CAFRs. A lot of work, a big pat on the back to the city's finance department for putting together such an excellent report. They're also planning to submit that to the GFOA, which is to seek the excellence in financial, financial reporting award there. So especially with all the new cities that incorporated around metro Atlanta in the past 10-so years, the norm has not also been to have a CAFR the first year. So big, you know, a lot of work, real pat on the back there. Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about the financial, just hit the highlights. We have audited all of the newly incorporated cities in the state of Georgia in this past 10, 12 years. So you want to see kind of how you compare, if you will. Starting on page six and seven, this shows a graph, and what it is, is fund balance, fund balance of the general fund compared to expenditures, annual expenditures. And you'll see there kind of how things have fared. I've broken it down by September 30-year ends and June 30-year ends, and so you can see those newly incorporated cities. And then on page seven, you'll see the newly incorporated cities that are actually December 31-year ends. Because as you know, tax revenues come in certain times of the year and so forth and may affect the levels of the fund balance. And so you can see December 31-year ends comparison being Brookhaven and Dunwoody, and where y'all compare that first year. Dunwoody being a little higher, Brookhaven being a little lower on that fund balance, and how that, you know, like all new cities, you kind of are on a tan a little bit in the beginnings. You kind of start a little, you know, you start and you have to build that fund balance. And so you'll see that trend going on. On the next page, eight, you'll see a pie chart that's breaking down the revenues of the city. For this year, franchise taxes, license and permits were the predominant revenue sources. We know that, you know, sales taxes and so forth will come on more in future years. And then on the next page, you'll see the general fund expenditures, mostly general government and community development expenditures. So those are kind of the highlights of the numbers, if you will, for the year. On the next couple pages, where it says note one going through note 13, what these are is kind of a Cliff Notes version of the financial statement footnote. So as you're looking at the financial statements in the CAFR, there's a lot of footnotes behind there, and this can kind of tell you kind of what each one of those footnotes are telling yourselves and the citizens in Stonecrest. Okay, starting on page 11, and it goes a few pages. These are our required communications under our standards, auditing standards, we're required to communicate these. I'm not going to read each one of them to you. I do want to hit a couple highlights. It asks whether we have any significant difficulties encountered during the audit or disagreements with management. I'm happy to report that we had none. The audit went very smoothly, especially for a first year, you know, working with the finance department and others outside the finance department. They were timely and helpful in getting us all the information we need to make it an effective and efficient audit. So we certainly appreciate that. We did have a few audit adjustments. Those are, have been, those have been adjusted in the general ledger of the city as well as reflected in this CAFR, again, to make sure that they're correctly stated. On page 14, this is the section where we usually go into what the standards require us to cite as findings. I'm happy to report, we didn't have any findings, which probably five years ago, the standards changed, and they kind of lowered the bar quite a lot for what we auditors have to call a finding. So that's really good, especially in a year that you're adopting all these internal controls and you're kind of, you know, drinking out of a fire hose, if you will, and trying to get all the established from controls and policy procedure standpoint. So huge pat on the back there. We did have what we call some management points, and they are kind of a byproduct of the audit. They weren't to the level that we have to cite them as findings, but they are things that we brought to management's attention, and some of them, I know they've already been working on. But they're there, and we had three of those type items. You'll see at the bottom of page 14 having to do with policy procedures, having to do with credit cards. On the next page, other policy adoptions related to capital assets, fund balance policies, IT policies, record retention, purchasing, and financial reporting. So these are just, you know, these, this isn't out of the norm, you know. As I said, I know that we're trying to get policy procedures in place and so forth, and these were things that we noticed as kind of an outsider, if you will, when we were going through the audit, that we could, we could get- going through the audit, that we could, we could get going there. Also, capital assets, we noticed they're being maintained in Excel. And as the city grows from a capital asset standpoint, you know, we think it's important to implement a software to utilize that. Excel is great, but it does have its inherent limitations. On the next several pages, if you need some reading material in the evenings, these are the new accounting standards that are coming down the pipeline. We always want to keep everyone abreast of those items. Again, you know, many, if all of these, won't really affect the City of Stonecrest right now, but you're putting new things in place, and so this is, this will give you an idea of how those might affect the financial reporting, these new standards coming out. So that goes for several pages, and certainly, to conclude my presentation, on page 26, I just want to point out, and I know that Ms. Mays already takes advantage of this, but we offer free continuing education to our clients. And that can include management within the city, both finance, outside of finance, council members, anyone that sees fit, that they feel like, you know, they could benefit from whatever we're teaching. We teach on a variety of subjects, and you can see all of those bulleted on page 26 of what we've done in the recent past. So I kind of offer that out, and, you know, anyone that takes advantage of that, we'd love to have you. And that concludes my presentation. If you've got any questions, I'd love to try to answer them.
I did have one.
Yes, sir.
On the credit card policy and procedure, you said during your test, your credit card transaction, we noted that the two employees that issued credit cards maintained the two cards, and you were suggesting that there are times that they should leave it in the office? Am I clear on that?
For the two employees that are issued cards, maintain them and are kept in their possession at all times, well, in other words, if I've got my credit card, I keep it in my possession. That's what we're recommending, is that they don't, they're not being kept off, away from them.
Okay, I read that differently, so let me just perhaps read it again.
What we're recommending there, if you look at the recommendation, when they're not in use, the credit card should be securely kept by the County Manager's Office. And what we do is, we go through, you know, when we're, when we're obtaining our understanding of the internal controls, you know, related to the city, we go through a series of both system understandings and internal control questionnaires, and that's something that was identified through the process that, that we felt mentioned of.
Okay, it's a matter of interpretation. I've got it now.
Okay, so I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, thank you. That was a great overview, and I'm happy to hear that we're doing a great job. My questions are related to your policy recommendations on page 15. I think there are six policies that you are highly recommending that we adopt these policies as well as these procedures. Now, this was a six-month audit, if I'm not mistaken, from June till December 31st?
Yes.
Okay, so, how soon are you recommending that the council accept these policies and recommendation? Because I find most of them as being pretty standard, and so, my question is, you mentioned that we need to create and adopt these accounting policies. You strongly recommend that, and so how soon are you recommending we adopt these policies?
I would just say as soon as possible. I mean, I don't really have a stated timeline. I mean, in an ideal and perfect world, obviously, these policy procedures would be in place, you know, and so we're kind of recommending them be put in place, and so as soon as possible.
Okay, is the city required to file an SS4 form?
I'm sorry.
Is the city required to file an SS4 form with the IRS?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure, ma'am. What we do is, as an accounting, or what we do in our audit processes, is we're looking at the financial statements, and we're testing as to the fairness of the financial statements, and we don't get as much into the tax. I understand, I believe you'll use outside folks for the payroll and the taxes and so forth, is that correct? That might be a question better for them.
It's been filed, Ms. Adama.
Excuse me, Attorney?
It's been filed.
Okay, does anyone know for sure?
Well, it's the only way you get an FEI-in number, and you may have done it.
What's your overall analysis of the report? What's your overall analysis of the report?
The, from a financial standpoint?
Yes.
You know, it's, I mean, I hate to say this, and I don't, I don't mean it negatively, but, you know, it's, it's kind of typical, and that's kind of what the graphs, you know, that we were, that I was showing as far as the other newly incorporated cities. And of course, y'all aren't a city that's been around for, you know, decades. You're a new city, but the unassigned fund balance of the general fund's about $100,000. The total fund balance is about $200,000. So, you're getting close to 10% of your annual expenditure, or this report's expenditures, that's not annual. But I think, my overall analysis is that it's good that you, you have a positive fund balance at the end of the first period. Many of the newly incorporated cities start off in a hole, so that fund balance is non-existent or negative because of the tax anticipation, though, that they have to live on in that first few periods, perhaps.
Okay, I got another question. So, in your, on page 15 on the bottom, for capital asset software, you made a recommendation that the city consider purchasing a system for capital asset maintenance and for scheduling, I guess, and to, I guess, prevent susceptible errors. What do you mean by that?
It could be anything under the sun. As I mentioned, Excel's a great program that they're maintaining the capital assets in now, but, you know, I've seen things where, you know, folks will use formulas for the depreciation calculations of capital assets, and, you know, those formulas may drive it into a negative net book value, which is starting to get kind of technical, but it's showing a negative value of the asset. You know, there's just, there's things in there, whereas a software system that is created to maintain capital assets and depreciate those capital assets wouldn't have, would have the safeguards, or if you will, that wouldn't, where you wouldn't have those errors.
Okay, so in your experience, what types of systems have you seen, and how effective are they, or can you even speak to that?
Well, most of the time, it is, it's general ledger systems that'll have a module related to capital assets, and so... Which capital assets, oh, I'm sorry, general ledger software? QS1. And so, oftentimes, what cities, counties do is they'll, they'll purchase the module related to capital assets for that as well and utilize that.
One last question. You also recommended that management establish a well-defined process for financial reporting that includes a long list of things. Are you able to speak a little bit more in detail on that? It's number six on page 15.
Yes, it is kind of a long list there, and this is kind of a, it's kind of along with the city being new and kind of putting in these processes and so forth, obviously, the data-data accounting is very important, but then also preparing the financial statements that are issued to the State of Georgia, provided through the website to the citizens in the city. Just having different formal documentations for approvals and reviews, monitoring changes, and so, all, what all these do is they try to ensure, or the accuracy of what's being reported in the financial statements, as well as trying to separate duties related to custody and accounting for and so forth of assets of the city to mitigate, you know, the risk of any kind of misappropriation, et cetera, or just error that, that is, that is inherent when you just have one person doing the job and keeping the custody of the assets, et cetera.
And when we retain your firm, I think one of the, one of my questions, when I went back to the minutes, was that we would receive an electronic copy of this report, you know, in advance so that we would have adequate time to review it. I mean, I did read it, but in the future, I'm just wondering if that's something that you all are able to adhere to and send electronic copies to the mayor and the council at the same time so that we're all getting a good electronic copy. I don't mind a hard copy, I love a hard copy, but I would have been able to get more done on it if I'd have had an electronic copy and kind of gotten it before today.
What we did, and we can, we can change this, are, again, we audit over 400 governments annually, and what we do is, obviously, we work for mayor and city council, but obviously, we walk, we work very closely with management. We issued PDF electronic copies toward the end of June to management, and so those were available, but usually with our clients, we issue those to management and ask they provide it to the mayor and council, you know, ahead of the meetings and so forth. And I, I believe that hard copies were asked for this last week, and we got that together and to you, but we had provided electronic copies at the end of June.
Anything else, council?
Yeah, just, just one.
All right.
I went through this once, and I intend to go through it again, and did I hear you say that from page 16 through, really, the end? Is this supporting information that really doesn't drive the audit itself?
This, no, this is, this is information to let you know what is coming out new in the coming years related to new accounting standards.
Okay.
And did not affect the audit this year.
That's what I wanted to hear, so I really don't have to struggle through that part again.
That's, that's right. Stay proactive for future years.
Thank you very much.
All right, council, we're good? Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
All right. All right, we're gonna move into our public hearing, sector of the meeting. Staff?
Attorney, do we need to accept the report?
You do need to accept the report. Accept the audit report.
All right.
As far as a motion.
I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to accept the audit report.
Mr. Mayor, I have the motion to, that we accept the audit report as written and as presented today.
All right, properly moved, I have a second. Properly moved and second. Any further discussion?
Well, yes, I mean, by accepting it, does that mean we are agreeing with it? Are we just accepting it as complete and...
No, you are accepting the report, okay? In other words, you're accepting the delivery of the report, you have it. Now, as far as whether you agree with it or not, that's, you know, that's, that's an issue of the, you know, professional standards.
Okay.
So it's, no, you're not agreeing to it. Yes, you are accepting it, meaning that you're taking the report as the report that the auditors have presented to you for the six months ended December 31st.
Okay.
So, when will we get the electronic copy of what we're accepting? Okay, when will council, when will, I don't know who's got a copy. I don't have a copy. I would like to have an electronic copy.
Ms. Mays says she'd take care of that.
Okay. All right, discussion over. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Accept it. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Dozier?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm here to present TMOB 18002, Industrial Parking Modifications. This is the second time you're hearing this item. Since the last time you heard this item, we have made some slight modifications based on some discussion with interested parties. We have reduced the setback from 50 feet to 25 feet, and we've also reduced the frontage from 250 to 150. So that was some of the items that were discussed initially that needed change. As per some of the interested parties, we have made that modification, and staff is recommending approval. We're available if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
All righty. All right, I'm going to accept the motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right, properly moved, I have a second.
Second.
All right, properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open.
For those, you wish to have those that are in favor to speak first, they have 10 minutes.
All right. We have a line skipper. I'm just messing with you, Ms. Mangum. All of those...
How are you?
How you doing, Ms. Mangum?
Good.
Yeah.
My name is Gina Mangum. I represent MMA Investment. They own the Texaco on the corner of 124 and Maddox Road. I'd just like to, we asked for some modifications, and I just would like to thank the staff, all of the attorneys, and particularly Councilman Jimmy Clanton. We came together and collaborated and came up with an ordinance that I believe we all can live with. So on behalf of my client and all of the people here, just want to thank you and encourage you to pass the ordinance as written.
Thank you. Ms. Knight?
Mayor, council members, good evening. You'll notice that I've switched sides. No longer in opposition, I am just so pleased to say that I and my clients, the Kellys, and I think lots of other folks out here tonight, are wholeheartedly in favor of this compromise. It's been a long journey. We began discussions with staff way back in October, and I want to particularly thank Councilman Clanton for the, I think, the really crucial work that he did in bringing folks together with the mayor's encouragement. I do want to acknowledge the extremely hard work that the Assistant City Attorney, Emily Machesky-Preston, did, as well as the Community Development Director, Ms. Dozier. They all worked very hard on this, and we do appreciate their efforts. I believe that we've reached a reasonable compromise here, a good endpoint. Most of all, though, I want to, I think I want to thank the folks who supported us from the industrial community at Lathonya Industrial Park. And at this point, I'd like to ask them to stand and, and just take a couple of moments to see who they are. If you all would stand, please, everybody who is supporting us from the industrial community. Thank you. This is not exhaustive by any means, but I think it is a reasonable sample. So with that, unless you all have any questions, I'd like to sit down. I know Ms. Battle wants to address you, and I think some of the individual folks from the industrial park do too.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm gonna keep my comments brief. I'm gonna say ditto on everything that my colleagues have said. This has been an opportunity to work collectively for the benefit, we believe, of both the industrial park and the city overall. I think that you all will be pleased with the results of this, and we are very happy and very grateful to Councilmember Clanton for his guidance on this issue, and we respectfully request that this, that the ordinance be adopted this evening. Thank you.
I nearly forgot. I've been asked by Mr. David Kirk, who represents Brown Trucking, to send his regrets. He is currently on a long-planned family vacation, and the man knows his priorities. But his client, or the representative of his client, the CEO of his client, Mr. Scott Shepherd of Brown Trucking, is here to, to speak tonight.
Scott? Ms. Bernie said, "I'm CEO of Brown Trucking. My name's Scott Shepherd. I'm not an attorney, so this will be really quick." I just want to thank Councilman Clanton, he worked a lot with us, and also the city staff, they've been very helpful, and to basically quote her, ditto, we think this is a great compromise benefit to both the industrial area and... ditto, we think this is a great compromise benefit to both the industrial area and also the city, and we really hope you guys pass this. Thanks.
How much time, Mr. Mayor?
Six minutes, 16 seconds.
All right.
Joe Coleman, CS Trucking Trailer. I don't want anybody else to forget that we need all you other council members besides Jimmy to vote for this. So thank all of you for your consideration. I think it is a great testimony that what we've said we want to do is have City Council, Stonecrest, the mayor, and industry work together. I think we're a long way off, but it shows that with effort, sincerity, and reasoning, common sense, that we can make improvements, and we are really appreciative of all you've done, and we appreciate you supporting this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council members. My name is Dan Kelly. We supported the city effort to make the city come about because it was going to be a pro-business type environment, and this is a product, a result of your hard work, and these are the results that we're looking for. I think it's a compromise. It's a good compromise. It's pro-business. It's helping everybody out here. It's not just helping me and my brother, but it helps a bunch of people, and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Bill Wychel with Lee &amp; Associates. On behalf of T&amp;M Trucking, Four Seasons Trucking, and Astro Investments of Florida, and a number of folks that I work with out in the industrial park, I also want to thank you for the time that you spent on this, and thanks to Nicole and staff and everybody. I think it's a great, great compromise, and I would also encourage you and ask you wholeheartedly to vote for this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, are there any others?
All right, we can.
Are there any others?
I see none.
Okay, let's go to the noes.
Okay.
There's four minutes, 47 seconds left.
All right. So we'll move to, we'll save that, and then we'll move to those that are speaking in opposition.
I'm going to fall out.
That's okay, Gina. That's okay. All right, seeing none. Move to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, would we close the public hearing for item TMOD 18002?
All right, properly moved. There's a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. All right. Mr. City Attorney, sounds like we're ready for a vote.
Sir, please.
All right. And I will take a motion from council to approve the industrial park modifications, TMOD 18-0002.
Mr. Mayor, I proudly offer the motion that we approve item three, Industrial Parking Modification, TMOD 18-0002.
Properly moved. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Properly moved and second. All right. All in favor?
Scott.
All right. All opposed? Passes. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to present the next two.
Okay.
Relate. Next three. Okay. This is where I miss Ms. Macheski-Preston.
Oh.
No, no, she's, she is still, really has to take it easy now, as far as the pregnancy goes. So she's, she's left the heavy lifting to me, which is now zoning that. So, this is, this is TMOD 18-003, and this is a text amendment to add the definition of short-term vacation rental to section 9.1.3 of defined terms. The history is, was that it was originally heard at the May City Council meeting and deferred. The same item was reheard at the July Planning Commission meeting, and the recommended action of the Planning Commission is to approve the petition, and they approved it at the July 10 meeting. So what's before you, you can either approve, approve, deny, or make alternative conditions. What this is, is if you look at it, is a definition of short-term vacation rental, and it defines the type of dwelling unit that's associated with that, and it's pretty much all-inclusive as far as types of dwelling units that we would call a, those that could be eligible for a short-term vacation rental. As long as these units are there, it's an accommodation of transient guests for a fee for less than 30 consecutive days. So this is the first part of what we're doing, because in the next part, if this passes, we will go on to talk about the limitations associated with the activities of the STVRs. Do you have any questions of me?
Say that last part again, Mr. Kirk, about 30 days?
30 days, so less than 30 days, for less than 30 consecutive days. If it's more than 30 consecutive days, then in your ordinance, you already have what you call, you have that taken, you have that discussed.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So we proceed to number four. We adding them all together, handling it separately?
No, we have to do them separately.
All right. So are we taking a motion for approval?
No, you're going to open the public hearing.
Public hearing. There we have it. I'll take a motion for a public hearing, folks. Open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would we open public hearing for item number four, TMOD 180003, Short-Term Vacation Rental Definitions?
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Hearing is now open. We will take those in favor. Speaking in favor of TMOD 18-003, Short-Term Vacation Rental Definitions. Okay. Seeing none, we will take those in opposition, and for the 18-003, Short-Term Vacation Rental Definitions.
Hi, I'm Fay Colfield. I live in the Stonecrest subdivision, and I just have a, I'm neither opposed nor in favor, because there's a couple of questions that I have. We keep hearing about less than 30 days and more than 30 days, and one of the things about Airbnb, these other vacation rentals, is that often you do take them for more than 30 days. I spent approximately eight weeks in one. So, you know, it depends on why you're there. And so to say that 30 days is going to be some kind of ruling, I have to tell you one of the things that I found out. And people subvert the law. This is why we have this problem right now. You say 30 days. Okay, in Costa Rica, I think you can only stay there six months on a guest visa. So what happens is at the end of approximately the fifth month, two weeks, people pack up their stuff, and they have created a business in Panama, where you go to Panama, you stay in Panama a couple of, a couple of days, you get your visa stamped in Panama, then you come back and you do the same thing over. And that process has gone on. I know people that have lived in Costa Rica and have businesses that have been there five, six years, going out and going into this new cottage business. So what you don't want to create is a loophole that people can avoid. My personal thing is that it should be however long the person wants to stay there, because don't forget, there is a contract between the person that's renting from the vacation renter and the vacation renter. So if they want to stay six, seven weeks, eight weeks, nine weeks, three months, some people come in, and one thing that we're going to find out in Stonecrest is that people are going to be coming into Stonecrest to do jobs that may be temporary jobs. They have their choice. They can go to a weekly motel, or they can take an Airbnb facility or another type of facility. Another thing that's very common when you rent the whole facility is that people that have experienced fires or damage to their property will rent it, and you can rent up to six, seven months, whatever. And so they're there. But we don't, you don't want to create a loophole that people are going to be going around, and that's going to cause another problem. So that's it. And I know the last time you were defining them as being like single-family houses and all of that, but one of the new, you know, some people have apartments, and they have, may have a two or three-bedroom apartment. They may even have a space over their garage, or you see a lot of people that do vacation trailers, like they will have a motorhome in their yard that's legally parked in their yard. People will Airbnb that. Yeah, I mean, you'd be surprised what people do, like in Africa. I've seen people Airbnb tents in yards. But so, you know, whatever is legal on that property, you know, people will Airbnb it, you know. So I use Airbnb, I say Airbnb because that's the one that I use when I travel. But I think there should be more definition about the time that a person can stay there, and I also think there should be a lot of talk, when you say, at one point, you guys were talking about the owner being present on some location. Well, what you may have, and this is another loophole people are doing, you may have like in a room and house, they have five bedrooms, four bedrooms. They rent one bedroom to a person, and that person manages the house, and they're considered in charge of the house. So what you need to do, if you're going to have that type of certificate, you need to make sure that the certificate goes with the person, not with the residence. Okay? And so those are my, my main concerns that we also have, that you, you know, Airbnb, you know, people, young kids, I've seen young kids, they sleep on couches. You know, I'm old. I need, I need the minimum of a room and a bathroom. And so that's just one of the things. And then I have some comments about these parties people are having, because I'll tell you that when you get to that, because there is a way that they're being addressed right here in the Cav County, and it has put a stop to it in certain areas. But you haven't got to that part yet, so I'll tell you that part on the next one, how you can stop it real quick. That's my comment.
There's five minutes and 27 seconds. Anyone else for speaking against the 18-003? Seeing none, I'm going to take a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close and second proper. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Hearing is now closed. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, from here, are we, we're taken as written for an approval or denial of the TMOD 18003?
As far as, you either approve or deny, or you can defer it.
All right. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just had some comments when we come to that. It's a non-overlook.
All right, now is the time.
Motion first.
Yep.
I would like to make a motion to approve at this time. Second, for the purpose of discussion.
All right, properly moved and second. We're in discussion phase. Yes, sir.
Just in general, wanted to say that this is a document that can be updated as we go along, so if we find that we need to modify it, that can be done. But I was looking at line 52F, that speaks to the maximum occupancy for short-term vacation rental. At any point in the time shall not exceed the occupancy as defined or is determined by one person per every 150 square feet. So I think that helps to control the numbers and some of the abuse that we've had in the community, and people just renting them, and you have, you know, 40 people in one facility, and that's ridiculous.
Councilman Turner, that's on the next text amendment. We haven't.
I'm on the wrong one.
It's about the same issue. It'll be, we'll have that issue. This one is just the definition of what is a short-term vacation rental, which is any, basically any sort of residence that is rented for a fee for less than 30 days.
Okay. Then that was another note, but I guess that will come later as well, in terms of the use chart.
Right.
Define which ones can be used as well.
So in regards to the definition, I do want to address the issue that was brought up by the citizen, particularly Ms. Colfield, and which is, you mentioned in your presentation that the period above 30 days is addressed at some other point in our charter?
You have transient housing, which is, which is addressed, which would be your suburban lodges, those types, which are really on the other, other side of that. And then you would have, somebody wants to rent a house for six months, and they rent a house for six months. I mean, it's, you know, you're not precluding people from, from renting for a longer period of time.
Right. So basically, we're trying to draw a line between what is short-term and what is something else.
That's right.
So, and so, yeah, I see your point. I did look on Airbnb website, and I did look at their stats, and their average day is 2.9 nights, but that's just an average. But, you know, I think we do need to start with a definition, and even, even though you was talking about another issue, Mr. Turner, it's still apply here. If we see where we need to come back and redress this at some point in time, I'm certain that council can.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of questions. I think I'm more concerned about how do we create some extra rules and guidelines simply to protect the residential nature of these types of dwellings, because they are in the middle of, some of them are in the middle of very high-end residential areas. And so I would be most concerned about, you know, I know they've been rented out for events and parties, so I'm concerned about how do we protect our residents who have, you know, worked very hard to have peace and quiet? How do we make sure that they remain, have that residential look? And yet, how do we provide the business owner the opportunity to, to, you know, put their home on Airbnb? But I'm most concerned about preserving the residential nature of these types of dwellings in our, in our neighborhoods.
So before you speak, now, isn't that addressed in the nace?
Correct.
Right. Here, we're just looking at the definition.
Yeah, this is just the definition. In the next section, it actually prohibits utilizing those properties for special events. It's written in the text, in the next set of the language.
I was thinking of definitions around, you know, creating some new rules and maybe modifying the definitions, and we can discuss it on the next one, but it is along the lines of the definitions.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and we've, is there any further discussion? All right. So I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes. Now we'll move to TMOD 18-0004, Short-Term Vacation Rentals Use Table.
Okay, this is, these are, actually, this does amend the use table to create this classification for short-term vacation rentals. We'll review that. The rest of the ordinance actually indicates what the, I guess, the limit- The rest of the ordinance actually indicates what the, I guess, the limitations as far as the types of activities that can take place within these types of residences, and also to provide certain features to, that there is safety as it relates to 911 calls and other things, and also the fact that it specifically talks about that you cannot use it for a special event, or a party, or a temporary outdoor event. And the owner won't permit this to happen with that. Certainly, you know, anytime that we, we create an ordinance with something that says that if you do this, then it would be up to code enforcement in order to make sure that that takes place, or, or the police department, as far as the Cav Police in, in doing that, and being able to write tickets relating to that. The, the question about, I guess that you had, Councilman Turner, relating to how many more, you know, how many people you can have in there, I was looking at the same thing. When you start counting it, it's, you know, you can have a few people in these houses, based upon what the size could be. I mean, that's, this is where it's, where it started. And if that's, if that becomes too burdensome, or you wish to restrict it even more, I think you just have to balance the person's ability in order, based upon the sizes of his house, to limit the number of people that are there, but more importantly, limit the parking that has to be off-street. Okay, that's part of this too, which is also important, that it relates to there. As far as no advertising signs, no types of things like that, you know, putting up, you know, things in the, in the nice neighborhood, that this is being sold, that this is being rented on a, a short-term basis, will not be there. It requires that each house be furnished with a hard line, as far as the telephone goes, and that it's, so that it can be connected, and that you can make various calls to 911 or whatever. And you also have to have a diagram in, in the unit showing two evacuation routes from where you are, that's there. So, and it's also unlawful to establish operator cause to be operated, a short-term vacation rental, in the city within 500 feet of another one, or bed and breakfast, or anything like that. So there's, you know, this is where the permitting process comes in, that, you know, person has to come in and be able to get, because they have to get a special land-use permit in order to do this, and if they don't do this, then, you know, that's also a violation of the ordinance, subject to fines relative to that. Now, as far as the use table goes, and the amendment of that, if you'll go, if you'll, if you'll go to the exhibit, to the attachment, and go to the second page, okay, you've got the whole use table here, so the only thing that's really being added is, if you go down to where it says housing and lodging, where it says short-term vacation rental, it indicates the zoning classifications in which you can have these activities. And so, it's not gonna be your, you know, it's not gonna be neighborhoods that are smaller, smaller lot sizes or the like, so that, you know, it does do that. It can go in MR1, which I assume is multifamily as it relates to those. If you go on down, you'll see that as far as putting it in MU zones, it's also available there. But each one requires a special land-use permit, so each time a person comes in and wishes to say, "I'm gonna have a short-term vacation rental," then they have to come in, just like, like those that wish to do the, you know, the housing for the, for the, for the children and those types of things, they have to come in and get a permit to do that.
Question for you in reference to, I guess, a business perspective. What if someone wanted to use a home for a movie set for about two months? Where would that be, what would that fall under? Because some of my constituents would like to have their houses available for uses when different companies come in or different people come in. So what would be the use for that? How could we use that?
Well, it wouldn't be lodging.
No, 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 they'll be staying there.
Oh, they'd be staying there?
Let's say, okay, well, let me give you an example. Reality shows are very popular. Okay, let's say they want to produce a reality show there with about six people. How would that work out in reference to being a short-term rental?
Well, that's, that's a good point. It would be, if it's less, if it's less than 30 days, it would be a short-term rental. But the other side of it, and we'll have to ask, I have to ask the question, as far as on doing the filming, you really don't require any permits as far as to do filming, unless it's on city property, as I, as I recollect. Is that the case, as far as the ones that are coming in and doing business?
From my understanding, if there's any filming in the city, whether it's personal, private or public, there's a permit.
So then, it would be dealt with at that time. But I, and if there's, and I'll look at this, if this is a hole, then we'll need to fix it. Because I think that's a good, valid point, because you wish to, certainly to encourage that, unless they have big swimming parties and ashes after.
Mr. Turner, I think I have more of a comment than a question, but I think you can probably address it. When it comes to the SLUP, you know, I, I have a problem with that. I think where you have the use table, I think that should be changed from SP to P, which means permitted, simply because I think there would not be a level of fairness across the board when you require people to do SLUPS in individual communities. I think instead of SLUPS, we may consider licensing, and it would have similar effect, but the SLUP will, will put Airbnbs at unfair advantages and disadvantages based on which community they're looking to move into. So, that's just an opinion.
Yeah, I think that the SLUP process, you know, really gets down to, how do you identify who's out there doing it? You know, if it's just a permitted use, then, and, and, you know, they haven't come in and, and done any sort of registration or given any sort of business.
Right, and, and that's, that's my point. You know, my point was that, as opposed to the SLUPS, if we wanted to do that, we can do the business license, offer a license and permit, as opposed to the SLUPS. That way, the playing field would be equal, no matter what community you're looking at. And then, communities that have HOAs, they already would not allow a, most HOAs don't allow for the short-term rentals anyway. So our licensing and permits would not supersede what an HOA says. So those communities are already protected. So, you know, my thing is, if you otherwise do a SLUP, and given the history of how things work, you know, it just depends on, you know, who presents, how people feel that day, and in, in the, the notion that a community, a particular community may have about an Airbnb, based on no real numbers, but just simply, it's almost like mentioning chicken house, or liquor store, or any of those words, you know? I, I believe there would be a tendency to put Airbnb in that same thing. And I think that in Stonecrest, we should have a place for all of the, all of those, including Airbnb. And my thing is, the key word is "place." And so, we have outlined in the use tables, the zoning for Airbnbs, which I have no, no problem with that itself, or they're all SPs, as opposed to what I think should be Ps.
Okay. Just, if I could just make, and I don't have a position one way or the other, if I could just make this comment, as far as HOAs and their covenants, which you say, "We'll take care of these," you, you do, you do not have the ability to enforce their covenants. Okay? However, if you pass this legislation and this covenant, and it's the same as their covenants, then you have the ability to enforce. I mean, that's the whole, the whole issues here. I understand completely what you're saying, and, but as far as, you could have people out there that are doing this, that you don't know that they're doing it. That's, I think, the, you know, whether there's a registration or not. You know, and it may very well still be the case, as long as they run a clean type operation and don't, don't do that. So, I mean, I, and, and, but this would be one thing that either you would need to, it would have to go back to the Planning Commission if you want to change this. And that may be, you know, and that's, if, you know, and if you want to change it in the future, it still has to go back to the Planning Commission. So if you want to get it to where you wish to have it, then that's an action that you can take.
Yeah. I mean, the Airbnb is a great idea, and it, when it works like it's supposed to work, you won't know that they are in the unit. Because, based on the statement that you have here, is that it is to be operated in the same fashion, or they should do nothing to change the character of the use of the facility. So, other than seeing a different face, you wouldn't know that they are there. Now, I might understand, well, when I look at the chart, it definitely says that when you get into the R-85 and the R-75, this is not permitted?
That's right.
Okay? And the only one that requires residency would be the bed and breakfast?
Yes, that's right. That's right. Yes, yes.
Right. That's the only one that requires that. Okay.
So, does a...
I would suggest that if this is an issue with council, I would send it back, get it done, you know? Unless you want to pass it and then create another text amendment, which you'll be going through the same process again that you've done right here. I mean, that's, we still have, we still haven't had our hearing, so we still have to have that.
Does the SLUP or the license supersede the covenant?
Beg your pardon?
Does a SLUP or a business supersede the HOA covenant?
Uh, no.
No, it does not?
No, because if, if, let's say the city doesn't enforce, the covenants will allow the residents to enforce, but they'll have to go enforce, basically as a nuisance, and go into Superior Court to join the activity and seek whatever damages that they can get.
So, if we, if we do a SLUP, how would we, as council, know what that covenant is for that HOA?
You wouldn't know. You don't, it's not really, if, if you pass this legislation with just a P, then this is all you're concerned with. If it's identical to what the HOA is, then you have the rights to enforce, they have the rights to enforce.
But if it's different?
But if there's a difference, if, if it violates your ordinance, you have the right to enforce, okay? If it doesn't violate their covenants, they don't have the right to enforce.
If it does violate their covenant, then we do have the right to enforce?
No, not necessarily. No. If their covenants are more stringent than what, what you have, but it's, but your, your concern is what, is what the ordinance provides for, not what the covenants provide for, because you're not in a position to support those covenants. That's why we're having this discussion.
Well, I guess that's where my contemplation comes in, with the difference between the SLUP and the business license.
Well, the difference between the SLUP and the business license?
The SLUP proposal versus...
The SLUP, it's just a matter of how, how people are gonna end up notifying what they're doing and how, how you stop it. Now, whether it wouldn't make any, you know, to me, if it was permitted, it wouldn't make any difference, and if you caught somebody, then they would need to come in and do a business license and, you know, bring everything up to what they're supposed to do, and comply with all of these things that are here. It's sort of the, the way to force them to come in, is by having, making them have a SLUP.
Also, if you had, if they did the business license, and if they was not doing the things that they were supposed to do, and neighbors complain about it, then we would have the, we would have the ability to go in and snatch a business license, as opposed to, you cannot snatch a SLUP. So, you know, well, I guess you could, you could, I'm sorry, I misspoke. You can snatch a SLUP, but I think the...
Yeah, you could take their business license.
You could grab the business license.
You still have the right to sit there and prosecute.
As, as well, as well.
Prosecute them in your courts.
Exactly. As well, if, even if we went the SLUP process, people can still have an Airbnb, as Mr. Turner noticed, without even, neighbors even knowing that there, it's what's going on. They never got a SLUP nor a business license. So I don't think either one of these would prohibit an individual that want to do something wrong from doing what's wrong.
Well, the difference with the SLUP is, is that there would be notice to the residents, and you would have, we would, you would have this process here. So if you...
It would be noticed if the person decided to do it correctly.
It would certainly reduce the amount of activity that, that this council would have in, in dealing with the SLUP.
And you mean the business license would reduce the...
No, I'm saying, the business license you would have anyway. I'm saying, if it's a SLUP, you're gonna go through the same process that we're going through.
Right, and every single time somebody properly applied for a SLUP to get a Airbnb or BNB, let's not say Airbnb, or short-term rental vac...
It's a zone, it's a...
They would, they would have to come in and do a zoning change for it, even though it's, it's zoned.
And the neighbors would know about it.
Right, right. But, I mean, you do understand what I'm saying, that if an individual decides to do it the wrong way, whether we do a SLUP or a business license, they would still do the same thing. The SLUP by itself wouldn't assure us that, that a, that a particular activity is not going on in a neighborhood.
I, I agree with that.
Man, people break the law every day, so this gives us teeth, when someone is caught breaking the law, to enforce it.
Right, with the business license and SLUP.
Right.
And do we have any...
With the business license, or, or, or now that you have, you have this definition, if they, you know, if you catch them doing it.
But at least with the SLUP, there's, the neighbors have to be notified, there's a meeting, there's a public hearing, so even though they may have already been doing it, once they're caught, now it's a, it's a public input versus just a business license, it's only staff saying, "Yes, you qualify, no, you don't." It doesn't give the public or the neighbors that input.
Yeah, I mean, you...
Which I think is your point, is that we, you don't want the input, because...
Well, I mean, you could...
Well, I mean, I'm not afraid of the neighbors, I'm more afraid of council. I mean, to be honest with you, you know? But the thing is, is that...
That register is not a free zoning or any public hearing.
Right, and as far as neighbors being notified, the notification is at the point that we approve a, a ordinance that says that Airbnbs are allowed in these particular neighborhoods under this particular circumstances. So, to further my point, part of what is not part of the ordinance, which I would like to see take effect, assuming that we pass the ordinance with the, the P, is we, we would be able, through business license, to have a registration of all the locations of these Airbnbs within the city of Stonecrest. We can now go back and, and, you know, and direct, say, for instance, well, even better, we could just put on our website a, a spot where a person can just complain about what they, what they know now to be an Airbnb. So now, instead of them being notified when they happen to attend a council meeting to see a SLUP being an issue, they are notified upfront with the business license, because it's on our website with the list of every Airbnb in the city, so, which we know of. So now, the neighbors are always notified, so if a person has an incline, say, "Well, I wonder if Airbnb is in my community?" They can go on our website, just like they can go on Airbnb, and see that, yes, there's Airbnb there, and they can say, "Oh, yeah, so that's why there's a lot of cars there," or whatever.
And I think that's a great idea. I think we should do that regardless, regardless if it's a SP or a P. I mean, that registry, quote-unquote, could still be there.
If, if the business license is, is required, but as it is now, you need the SLUP to get the business license.
We can do away with that part.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's fine. I mean, you know...
Technically, I mean, you know, we, we set the standards for what, what the business license would require. I mean, if, you know, the only thing we have to say in the business license process is that it has to be in a, in an area that is already zoned for...
Or you don't, you don't get a business license.
Right, if you're not in that zone, you don't, you can't, don't even apply. You know, so that would protect neighborhoods like in the R, where was it, R5s? R-85s or whatever, and so, yeah.
Yeah. It's not permitted.
I'm done, I'm sorry. Thank you for your engagement.
Thank you, no, thank you for your soapbox, it was good. I would suggest that this time, Mr. Mayor, let's have, let's have the hearing, because there may, this is gonna be fodder for what they're gonna say, okay?
All right. Okay, then I will take a motion to open and public hearing. All right, okay, then I will take a motion to open a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm with you, we open the public hearing for item number five, short-term vacation rental, use table and regulations.
All right, properly moved, have a second.
I second it.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the public hearing is now open, and we will start for those that want to speak in favor of T-Mon. Yep?
Oh, counsel.
You go get a whoopee.
I'm Ed Weena Clanton, and I'm a real estate agent, and I'm very much for the Airbnb short-term rentals. I have clients that are coming into Stonecrest buying them, they're willing to abide by the rules that we set down. I also want to say I live in a covenant community, and our covenant in it states very clearly that we will have no short-term rentals less than 30 days, so our covenant covers that, and it also states, I just read it again, we're not even allowed to change the zoning, so if we found a way to do the short term and you all require to do the zoning, we can't even come and, and change our zoning in our community. So, the communities that have covenant, we do have an Airbnb right now in our community, the covenant, the HOA is taking them to Superior Court, as was stated earlier. We're trying to get him out of that community because we will not have Airbnbs in the parts of Stonecrest.
Oh, this was for?
That was for.
I'm for Airbnbs, but in my community, we have covenants. I chose to move in a community that has rules, and we don't have them in ours, and I believe in following the rules. Now, outside of the parts of Stonecrest, I'm selling plenty of property for people who want to do Airbnb because they're going to be very profitable here in Stonecrest.
All right, okay.
It's a business.
We're still open for, for, four. Any further comments in support of the short-term vacation rental use table and regulations? Okay, seeing none, then we will move to those not in favor.
Once again, I'm neither in favor nor not in favor, but I have a little problem. You say that...
Excuse me, Ms. Cofield.
Uh-huh.
You have to be either one or the other. If you're, if you're not for it, then this is the time.
Okay, well, I'll be, I'll be against it since I get to say what I can say. I think that the, the thing about 100 feet, you know, 100 feet determining one person per 100 feet, if you have a 4,000-foot house, that means you can put 40 people in that house, and I think it should be more on the number of bedrooms. New York City has one of the most stringent Airbnb rules there is, and they still have illegal rentals, and they're posted on Airbnb. One thing that, that I think, I don't see enough of in this is enforcement by the police. Now, in Tucker up in, I think it's Kalamana, whatever that, that big exclusive thing is, they had a problem up there, and they called DeKalb County, and what DeKalb County did was they didn't cite the owner, they cited the person that was on the property, and they cited them for selling liquor without a permit and also for operating a business without a permit because they were charging to get in, so they got that. I, I believe that the 911 thing about the landline phone, I think most of us know that landlines are going out. Most people don't, some of you don't even have probably a landline in your house. 911 is equipped to kind of determine where you are, but most importantly, when you rent an Airbnb facility, they give you, I've been in some very remote places, but they give you an accurate description of where you are. Now, in the U.S., because we go by addresses, they give you the exact address of where you are when they send you back the confirmation. The other thing I have a problem with is where you say none of them close together, and I want to give you a story about a declining neighborhood that put owner-occupied Airbnbs in there, and that was in a part of Anaconda in DC. And I stayed at one on a block there, and I have to look through my records to find out where it is, but they had formed their own community there. One person started renting hers out, and then another person rented theirs, and that whole block, you could see the improvement of how these houses were made. I think it has to go with the property, and I think it has to be an enforcement of the laws that exist now. In other words, right now, people are complaining about these parties. If you have a house up in, what is it, uh, uh, Stone, Stone, whatever it is off of Browns Mill Road, those houses are five, six, some of them 7,000 square feet. That means they can have 70 people in that house, and that is where the problem comes in. The thing about parking, they're going to get around that with the thing that I think one of the people that was here last time complained about was about the buses, and what they do, they take the bus, they tell the people to park on private property, like at the library or whatever is closed, and then they bus them from there to the location. You have people that use them for family reunions, hey, I'm opposed to that. People want to live in their house in peace and quiet, but saying that if you allow somebody to have 400, that they only have 100 space per 100, one person per 100 square feet, that's a lot of people that can be crammed in that house. So that's what I, I have an objection to, and I think also there needs to be a very stringent coordination between the East Precinct and the city of Stonecrest as to that you want them to not only cite those people, but you want them to get the name of the owner because I think after five, five sites for, selling liquor without a license, trust me, is a very serious offense, and that fine is extremely high. So that's like, I mean, it's, it's not even like running a liquor house, it is an expensive fine. So when you start getting the occupant, you get a whole different thing, but yes, you have to do something about it, but also you have to remember that what you'll see people do is convert their house into a rooming house, and once it's converted into a rooming house, everything about Airbnb goes away. And another thing is, what about private group listings? Because there are certain groups out there that rent within their group. By way of example, there is a law enforcement group worldwide that only rents to police. There are doctors groups that only rent to doctors, they don't even advertise, so they're completely out of the Airbnb and the, the short-term rental because they're not short-term renting, and, and a lot of this doesn't involve the exchange of cash. So, you know, I mean, it, it's, I'm just trying to be so that you don't get out there and say, okay, you can have 100 people per person, per, per, per space, you can have 100 people, and you end up with 70 people, which was, what was happening up there in Sandstone Estates. What you want to do is make sure that the noise ordinance is controlled, that the liquor sales are, because that's what they're doing, they're selling liquor, and that, we ain't talking about rent parties where people come in and they trying to collect the rent, we're talking about people paying 20, 30, 40, $50 to get in. So, you know, that, that's a paid party. So, these are just some of the things, and the size of the house really shouldn't depend because if, we have, and this may shock you, but in the city of Atlanta on Dill Avenue, you have Airbnbs. You, you, you just have it because in Stonecrest, one of the things that kind of hinders us is that we don't have a lot of public transportation, but in other areas, especially with Europeans and Africans, all they want to be is near the bus stop, they don't care how rough it is. But we can do really good with Airbnbs in this area if we make sure that we have tight control on it, doing the SLUP, doing all of that, people get around that every day. So, I'm just trying, I'm not trying to be, you know, the, the, the person of all doom, but Mrs. Clanton was correct when she said that we need to make sure that neighborhoods are protected, you know, my neighborhood is quiet, we like our neighborhood quiet. We had a person, they never could make them rent, so they had a rent party every other week, and we had to get the DeKalb County out there to straighten that out. But I do hope you will consider re-changing the size of the facility and make it the number of bedrooms, and I think that's what they did in Doraville, they made it the number of bedrooms. And with regard to the off, off parking, doesn't mean anything, and I'll, I'll add this because there's a lot of concern about Airbnb. Like I've said before, I've traveled to some of the most dangerous places in the world, and I was in Kenya when Al Shabazz came by and everything else and decided to do a little terror attack about 60 miles away. The one thing I don't do, I don't stay in hotels. I do not stay in the Marriott, the W or all of that when I'm out of the country because that's the first place terrorists come to get some hostages. So I'm usually in bed, I'm usually embedded in the community, and as of this date, I haven't had, in some, some of the craziest places I've been in, I haven't had a problem in an Airbnb facility. It is the crazy people that do what we're complaining about, and that's why you have to be very, very, very strict that they don't have a loophole. Plus, don't forget the ones that are buying up these properties that Ms. Clanton is talking about, they got beaucoup lawyers that will come after you, so you want to make sure you type, okay? And like I said, I don't, I don't, I'm just an Airbnb or, you know, a vacation rental person because I just don't stay in hotels when I travel.
How much time?
One minute, 34 seconds.
One minute. Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Properly moved, they're second.
Second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed.
Before you have your discussion, can I make one clarification based upon the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And maybe another reason why it needs a little tune, tune-up? It does provide that the maximum occupancy for overnight guests must not exceed two guests per room. And in that particular area, they were saying that if you had a little room of 70 square feet, then you could only have one guest, but if you had a 120 square feet, you could have two.
Or 1,000.
Or 1,000, yeah, just two. And then there's a, a maximum occupancy based upon square footage is of the, of the residence of the dwelling that Ms. Cofield was referring to, and probably more likely than not, that was to be a limitation to result in very small residences that try to cut a lot of bedrooms into it, and I think that probably clarification needs to be taken into, and I think that's what the intent of that was, or that is, but the fact that I'm, I'm bringing it to your attention, there could be, somebody could argue differently. In other words, the two need to be put together so that it's an overall, that so, that one is a limitation of the other.
All right, let's pledge to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to defer, to defer this, and for council to discuss at length and clarify some of the issues that has been brought before us.
Council has moved for the deferral, we'll have a second.
I second that.
Properly moved and second.
You go, you go back to planning and zoning, it needs to go back, okay? But you, you know, we...
Okay.
I have another comment about change perhaps, so I looked up water closet and lavatory, and they are the same thing, and it says water closet and lavatory versus one or the other, so we probably need to clean that up because...
How about, how about sink? Would you rather use lavatory and sink or water closets?
Toilet and sink, that would be better.
Water closets.
All right, and properly moved and second for the deferral, we're still in discussion, councilman.
This has been deferred once, and I know we're not going to get this thing perfect the first time around, and I know we're going to revisit it again, and we need to be ready for litigation should it come our way, but this is an effort to put some controls in place, and I think the sooner we get it in place, the better, but be ready to modify it as we go along.
Yeah, and I want to add that criminal activities such as Ms. Cofield mentioned, serving liquor, and, and especially if you have underage individuals there, so I think those are some things that we need to take into consideration prior to making a decision.
I, I agree, but I think, and I think the point that Ms. Cofield was, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, was recommending or suggesting is that if that's illegal now, as far as what they were doing, as far as charging for, you know, charging for alcohol and charging admission for...
Yeah, but my, my comment is more about how do we set some rules and guidelines, or can we do something to kind of manage and control that or even tighten it? So I understood what she was saying, I just want to know how can we protect? Again, I go back to the basics of how do we protect my neighborhood and everybody else's neighborhood from the criminal activity that is possibly taking place in these types of structures, and I think it needs a serious conversation, and, and our DeKalb policemen are already, you know, over tasked, and we don't have enough of them as it is, so, you know, having these types of structures and having liquor and alcohol and underage people, it just brings more unwanted elements that as a new city, we just don't need for our brand.
Okay, so, it's been properly moved and, and second. Any further discussion for deferral? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, we have five one, and...
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and Council, this is item S. SLUP 18-002, this is 6721 Covington Highway. The applicant is requesting a SLUP to establish a liquor store as part of a redevelopment project. Just so you know, this application was originally heard on May 1st, 2018 by the Planning Commission. The commission recommended denial of this application. The application was then heard by Mayor and Council on May 21st, where you referred it back to the Planning Commission. At this point, the Planning Commission has heard this item as of July 10th, 2018, and they recommend approval with conditions. Staff's available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier, I'll take a motion to open public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, properly moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Public hearing is now open. We will start with, those are in favor.
Yes, Michelle Battle, representing the applicant. We are happy to be here this evening in connection with this particular application. I've got assistance here, I'm going to ask them, let me have you move up. All right, so, we are looking for a special land use permit in order to allow for the relocation of state wine and liquors, which is located at, I think it's 660, 6670, sorry, Covington Highway, at the intersection of DeKalb Medical and Covington, to allow for its relocation to the property at 6721 Covington Highway. The intent here is to allow for an upgrade in the facilities. The building that you're seeing here in the elevations is what the applicant is proposing to develop on the site. We believe that this is a drastic improvement over what is currently at the 66, 6670 location. My client currently rents at that location, and so what we are excited about is him becoming an owner, allowing for not only his vesting in the overall community, but also moving, quite honestly, his very lucrative business over into the city of Stonecrest. We believe that this is an opportunity for him not only to develop on the site a, a one package store, but also to add additional retail office use on the site as well. When we look at the site plan, there have been some modifications. Originally, you all would see that there had been a building located here towards the rear. What they have now done is placed the building alongside this eastern boundary line at 12,000 square feet. This would be the location of the package store. The additional building on site for the office retail would be located along the western boundary of the subject property. And... And the parking would be located within the interior. We would be compliant with all of the landscaping requirements with regards to parking lots. There would also be ample landscaping along the front portion of the property with the only entrances from Covington Highway. There would be no entrance from the rear off of Hill, Hillvale. Adjacent to the property, we, in terms of the adjacent property owner, we would be looking at putting in a 10-foot buffer, landscape buffer along the perimeter of the property. And then in the interior would be a fence that would be located here, and we would do additional plantings, having gone out to the site. It is kind of scarcely developed within that 10-foot area, and so some additional plantings would allow for more privacy for the adjacent property. We would also look at putting fencing around the perimeter here, which provides kind of a buffer, extended buffer, when you take into account the 50-foot width of the building itself, along with the 20-foot setback and the 10-foot landscape buffer that we would be installing, that really kind of protects the adjacent property from visual impact. We are hoping to be able to have vehicular access so that there will be cross, what we call it, say cross-property access, that's not very eloquent, but it would be access between, we're hoping between the Sonic, and that would also allow access into the Walgreens. So when people are coming off of that corner, there will be interparcel access between those properties is what is being proposed. We believe that this provides a great opportunity for the development of a piece of property that has been vacant for quite some time. When we look at the existing facility, what we know is that it is already in the community. The impact of that package store is already there. It actually is a very profitable package store, as package stores go. And so we know that the community certainly utilizes this facility. It is there, but it is in unincorporated DeKalb County. What we are looking to do again is to relocate that facility and close down the existing facility once this one is built, which would mean that there would not be an additional store coming into the area. We are simply relocating that store and shutting down the existing store. And because of the proximity issue of having to be with any adjacent package store would have to be more than 1,500 yards away, there would be no ability to have the re-establishment of a package store on that particular corner. So again, we are looking to allow for this business owner to continue to flourish in this area. We believe that he can do it in a way that is respective, respectful of the adjacent properties, and to allow for him to develop his property. This evening, I would like for those who are here in support to please stand. And we've got some individuals won't be coming up to the podium to speak, so I'm going to sit down and allow them the opportunity to come up before I use up all the time. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Battle, can you bring that map a little, I can't see it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, there's four minutes and 19 seconds remaining, all right?
How you all doing?
All right, sir.
My name is Jerry Stewart. I stay at 5975 Wellborn Church, New York, in the community of Mossaw, an employee at State Wine and Liquor. It's a very respectful place. We're greeting each and every customer coming through the door. And I think it'll be a great opportunity for the community, which is upgrade, bringing more jobs, more office space with even more jobs. And I think with y'all help, it'll be a great success. Thank you for your time.
I want to make one additional point. Right now, they have 10 employees, many of whom live and, live in the community. And upon the development of the new facility, they would actually add an additional 10 jobs for a total of 20 jobs on site.
Hello, my name is Harvinder Sketty. I live in Quinette County. I'm working with Mr. Paul since last five years. So working this long period, I am a part of this community. I support Mr. Paul to, his initiative to expand his business in this community. He's a very good businessman, and he considers the well-being of this community and his employees. Also, for the expansion, make the uplift of this, our work environment, also create a room for the growth. And also attract our, the customers and secure our jobs. Thank you.
My name is Nalkachotafese. I worked on this liquor store almost five years. So I, we also, we all, all the employees get how a hardworking get paid off. So we all support, we all, the employees support for the expansion of the new location. Thank you.
My name is Moga Sababu, and I live in, in Gunnet County. I'm working in the State Wine and Liquor almost like three years. He's really a good person. He gave me good opportunity for me. So thank you, Mr. Paul, and I support the liquor store. Thank you.
Yeah, we have two minutes and 34 seconds remaining.
Hello. My name is Trudy Morgan, and I live at the parks of Stonecrest. And I just want to say that I'm in support of the liquor store. I think that it's a good idea that, that it will be bringing income to the city of Stonecrest. Also, it will free up all the congestion in the current area where they're located next to the Papa John's. You can never find a parking space there. With the new, I didn't get to see the plans, but I did see the, oh gosh, the, yeah, the thing that they, thank you, the site plan. And I like how they have it set up where it's set back from the street, and they'll be opening additional stores. So I just want to say, I live here and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
One minute, 48 seconds remain. Good afternoon or good night. I, I think I need a drink.
I actually do not live in the community, but I do shop State Wine and Spirits. I am a bourbon drinker, not every day. My name is Don Patterson. Yes. I do come down to shop at State Wine and Spirits. I love shopping there. I think the addition of, of the move for State Wine and Spirits will be great for the community. And I promise you, I know Paul, he's a first-class person, and his operation or his store will be extremely first-class. Thank you very much.
Yeah, there's one minute and 13 seconds remaining. And it would be a great benefit to our city clerk if those who have spoken, if they could come and just write your name, so that we can record that in the minutes.
Hello, my name is Barbara Hall. I live in the city of Stonecrest, and I am for support of the liquor store. I do not buy liquor. I don't like liquor, but I don't like the congestion that's down there on the corner of industrial, DeKalb Medical and Covington Highway. And I think this would be a great move for them. It is going to open up more jobs for them, for people in the area, and I think it would be a good idea. So I am in support of it. Barbara Hall.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-nine seconds remain.
All right, she's going to reserve her 39 seconds. And now we will go into those who are opposed. Okay, seeing none. I think, Ms. Battle, would you like to use your 39-second term? All right. Okay, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm moving to close the public hearing, hearing for public, I'm sorry, for special land use permit, 18002 Covington Highway.
Second. All right, properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, public hearing is now closed. All right. Counsel, you. We have the applicant and the representative. What's your pleasure?
I have a question.
Discussion.
All right. Discussion, well, you have a question or that, you're going to ask it now.
Okay. You said there would be no access to.
Hillvale.
Hillvale.
Yes, sir.
On your design, there appears to be a stubout to Hillvale. Might that, you know, that's not a stubout?
Okay.
The site plan that we have here, yeah, that, that was the old site plan. There's no access off of the back here.
I know, currently, there's no access.
Currently, there's none, and none proposed in connection with this.
You won't be coming back next year for an access?
No, no, we will not.
So this is.
And staff is already, and the staff recommendation indicated no access from Hillvale.
Okay, and you clearly stated that the liquor store will be vacated in the spot that it's in, and since you don't own it, you can't determine what's going to happen to it, you're just vacating it?
Right. We'll be vacating it, but they can't re-establish that use because as soon as we, we are not moving. Our lease actually extends past. I think our lease is another. Another, technically, another six years, 10 years. So we, we can hold up that space so that there's no liquor store that's going to be relocating there.
The regimen that you presented, is that similar, or is that going to be your design?
That is our design.
It is going to look like that, that is it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we see here is what we will get?
Yes.
That's one.
Ms. Battle, what kind of reception has the surrounding community had to the move, specifically our resource, our women's resource?
With regards to that, we did have an opportunity to meet with both Gene Douglas and with Barbara Gibson with regards to the adjacent property. They had some concerns that had been raised concerning security, making sure that the buffers were adequate. The reality is, I explained to them, and it just kind of is what it is, is that without, as the property is currently zone C1, any business, including, for example, minor automobile repairs, other facilities that may not be as warm and fuzzy, or probably on equal standing from their perspective as, as the package store. Under the current district regulations, there is only a five-foot landscape strip required between those properties. And so as a result of coming through this forum, we have an opportunity to do all we can to protect the adjacent property. And we appear, we, we feel that we have done that by adding in the 10-foot landscape buffer, agreeing to beef up that buffer as staff is placed in its condition. Additionally, by having the building, by having the building there to buffer, there to buffer, again, at 50 feet of width, and the 20 feet from the property line along with this 10-foot strip, that's roughly 70 feet where any of the cars here would not have the ability to look through to the other adjacent property. So I know that in the scheme of things, they are not happy. I'm just going to be honest with you. Are they happy that we're moving next door? No. I'm just being candid. Have we done everything we can to try and protect that property, particularly by placing the impediments on that side so that you can't have a direct visual? We believe that we have. And we feel like, quite honestly, again, if we weren't going through this process, there would be nothing that the city could do to provide that protection that we're providing now.
Thank you. Well, one more question. If I'm not mistaken, there was a proposal that we did pass for an assisted living complex that would be on the other side. Have you all spoken to those owners just to kind of get a feel for?
Talking about on the other side of the resources?
Right.
No, we didn't have any conversation with any of them.
What are the conditions? You said approval with conditions. What are those conditions, Ms. Doja?
Okay, originally, when staff heard this item, we had 11 conditions. We actually now have 13. We added two additional conditions based on the last meeting that we had. Originally, we had stated that there'd be no access, or access on Covington Highway had to be approved by Georgia Department of Transportation. We said no access on Hillvale Road. We also required a deceleration lane on Covington Highway if required by Georgia Department of Transportation. The install of an eight-foot privacy fence along the western side of the property. In addition, the applicant is also putting in a 10-foot buffer along that side as well. Also, we said that they had to comply with the liquor license requirement. There would be no consumption of alcohol allowed on the premise. No tables, no chairs should be provided to customers. The following uses were also prohibited at this location. Restaurant with drive-through lanes, automobile, boat, trailer sales, car wash, late-night establishments, hotel motels, adult entertainment, pawn shops, title pawns, check cashing, or flea markets. So those uses are prohibited in conjunction with this application. Also, we prohibited the use of outdoor storage and display of outdoor products. And we also put in architectural requirements, which was the reason why the picture that you have seen had upgraded architectural features such as glass block, natural stone, concrete, terracotta, stucco. So that's some of the things we required. In addition, we said the refuge area, which is just the garbage, had to be fully enclosed and screened away from the street. In addition, the applicant has also agreed to extend the sidewalk along the east side of the property, and also install surveillance-mounted cameras at this facility. So with that, we have 13 conditions that the applicant has agreed to put in place as they are requesting approval of this application.
Attorney Battle, does the liquor license move with the applicant?
Um, yes, it will move with the applicant.
Okay, so the infrastructure that you continue to own for six years? Whoever gets that establishment, then they won't have, they'll, will they be, will they be able to get a liquor license?
No, because they, they won't be able to be a package store.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
And we don't have, truthfully, we wouldn't even have a problem with the conditions indicating that the package, that the opening of that store would be conditioned on the other store closing down, or some, you know, some coordination of that. I don't know if we can.
Well, it's not really necessary.
There's none necessary.
You couldn't do it anyway, because again, you're within 1,500 feet. So you got to close one to be able to open the other.
But you still own it, so whoever.
He's renting it, so he, he have to use it for something totally different. He would not be able to continue to use it for a package store.
Okay, okay, so if I went over there and I wanted to lease it, walk me through what would happen?
He's, right now, he currently has the lease on it, and his intent is to utilize the building for something else. So it wouldn't be used for a package store. And the, part of the challenge with that site is, has already been indicated, is that it's small and the parking is very limited. So it'll probably be some type of retail use or, or other use on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any more? Okay. All right, then, I'm going to make a motion to approve the. My apologies. Apologies. I, I need to take a motion to close the, close the public hearing. We said we already closed public hearing.
It's closed. It's closed.
Yeah. Yeah, we did close it. That's right.
You opened.
But we didn't.
And we closed. Yep.
If she used her 39 seconds, how did we close it?
She was just answering questions for us. We, we.
That was a previous motion. That was a previous motion. Guarantee you.
So we all can use a drink tonight? That's right. So would it hurt us if we did it again? Okay.
Okay.
I thought we did. I thought we closed it. All right. Then, uh, I'll make a motion to approve SLUP eighteen dash zero-zero-two, uh, six-seventy-one, Covington Highway.
I second it.
Properly moved and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so approved. All right. We will now move to, uh, public hearings, public hearings, public comments.
See?
Man.
Skip one. It's okay, it's okay.
It's okay. You say I skip one? Someone say I skip something?
Okay, well, it comes at the public comment, that's an agenda item for ordinance, that's number seven.
Number seven.
Option of the, uh...
I only have one public comment.
Okay.
And I don't see her, and that's, um...
Bay Copia.
Yeah, well, okay. So, uh, all right, uh, now we go to the agenda items. Uh, number seven, let's see, ordinance adopting the city of Stonecrest travel policy and procedures.
Yeah, I, I have that, Mr. Mayor. This is the second read of this ordinance.
All right.
Um, and the read of the ordinance would state that an ordinance of the city of Stonecrest, Georgia, adopting the city of Stonecrest, Georgia, travel policy and procedures, um, I think this, this, the policy and procedures have been vetted, I think the last change that was made related to the overall daily amount of, of, uh, the limitations on food, cost of food, and providing for, um, the guidelines, I believe, that GMA had proposed with, with respect to daily consumption, and on days of travel and days of return, a reduction of that, and the amount that's there. Um, in that way, if you choose not to eat breakfast, then you can have a bigger lunch in, in whatever is, so, but I think, um, that Ms. Macheski had just gone over this, um, quite thoroughly, uh, during the first read back in June, that, um, if you have any questions or any more comments, I think we just should go ahead and entertain them now.
All right, council, what's your pleasure?
One question, it says, um, it's effective upon adoption, and if we adopt it in the middle of a, uh, budget year, and the budget doesn't support it, what impact might that have?
The budget, the budget will control how much you spend, it won't have any impact on, on how you travel, this has the impact on how you travel and what you can be reimbursed for.
Okay. That makes sense.
Moving forward.
Moving forward, that's right. Great, council, what's your pleasure? All right, now I'll take a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion to approve as read.
All right, properly moved, they're second?
Second.
Properly moved and second, further discussion?
Just make comments that, like all documents, this can be updated as we go along, modified and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Directed, so, yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ordinance passes. Thank you, folks. All right. Okay, Mr. Sitting today, city manager, is he on it?
Uh, I believe I am going to defer to our city, uh, city attorney, uh, for the matter of the, uh, Grice, uh, contract that we're working on.
Okay. Um, actually, there's, um, another matter that, um, city manager wanted to bring to council, and it relates to these text amendments that, you know, we've, we've been doing, and how they originate. A, a text amendment can, um, be offered by either the planning director, the planning commission, or any one of you all, and, uh, I think as an example, when we were dealing with the, the text amendment associated with the industrial park, that was really something that, um, that you, you, you started on. What's occurring is that there are a number of conversations that are taking place between either, um, usually the lawyers and staff, and, in which they're requesting a text amendment, uh, that it be considered, um, and, so, the, um, sort of the references, and to say, well, go talk to the councilperson that's in there, and, and what ends up happening is, is that the lawyer reports back, not the councilperson, you know, lawyer wants, you know, to go ahead and have an ordinance drafted as quickly as possible, and may not have the time, and would like to modify this procedure, is what, um, Mr. Harris is recommending, is that once these come in and these are raised, and even if, you know, you're contacted about them, is that, uh, any request for a text amendment would actually be presented at a work session, so that everybody will have an idea as to what it is, and, uh, go ahead and, and determine whether or not that's something that should be taken forward as far as doing that before the process starts. So, uh, you know, give that report. As far as, um, Grice Consulting, there's two things I wish to cover, um, relating to that. One is, is that we, uh, have a meeting Thursday morning in order to, uh, this is with lawyers and with, uh, uh, and the members of staff, and I guess, Mr. Turner, if you're gonna be in attendance there, at ten o'clock, to go over issues involving scope of work and, uh, determination how the scope, and how the, how the things are being paid for, or what the, what the, what the fees will be associated with that. The other thing I need to mention is that we, we have had a complaint raised, uh, by a citizen, which had indicated that the, uh, uh, resolution that was passed back in May concerning, um, the direction to the city attorney to negotiate an agreement with Grice Consulting, um, I guess consistent with the terms of whatever that proposal was at the beginning, uh, the, the claim is, is that that violated the Open Meetings Act by virtue of the fact that it wasn't on the agenda, uh, and there was nothing that, that was there, and, and what really precipitated that was after this meeting, um, that that was done, the attorney general came out with a ruling with regard to the DeKalb County, uh, matter in which they changed, they changed the agenda and just voted on the matter relating to their own pay raises, uh, and the attorney general ruled that, yes, that did violate it. Um, however, it was beyond the period of time in which anybody could complain. Um, now, those two are really very different, the two are very different with each other, with the, um, with the DeKalb County situation, they were actually voting on something, and approving something that related to compensation and, and things like this. Um, in the, the situation that took place last May, it was, um, uh, we had on the agenda discussion of the RFP, and then the motion was made before that came up in order to direct me to, um, negotiate with them, uh, based upon the same sort of things, and that was passed. Um, I, I see, I say, I, this is what I'm saying, is, is that I now agree with what he says, however, the, the, the situation is not the same, because what you, what you, what the resolution you passed was really nothing that bound the city to anything, because you're gonna have to have this contract put before you, and it's gonna have to be vetted by you and, and approved by you. So, where, where I'm coming from is, is that, um, my recommendation would be, and this would be something that we would have to put on another agenda, or may not just do it at all and just take your shots at it, uh, would be to, to, uh, make a vote to rescind that motion, because it really doesn't, I don't think it means anything at all, or just let it go and let, let the things, let the chips fall where they may fall. Now, the, I guess the point being is, is, and the other thing was, is they wanted the condition that there be an RFP. Uh, as a matter of fact, is, the point of the fact would be, this is my opinion, seeing these things happen before, is that, um, given where the feeling of the council is, is that the likelihood of anybody even answering the RFP would, would be unlikely, because they're, they already know that there's, you know, this, this, uh, understanding, or I'll say, this, this opportunity that's been given to Grice in order to negotiate an agreement. So, uh, I just wanted to cover that with you all, and cover it in an open meeting, so that we're, we're all transparent as to what's, what's taking place. I would think just to fix it, I would just rescind it. It's not, uh, it doesn't say that we, probably by the time we do that, we may have something to be presenting to you anyway, so. The other things that I just wanted to, uh, bring to your attention is that, um, the on-zoning proceedings, the policy contemplates that anything that you all receive as council members are part of the evidence, and need to be given to the, um, uh, planning director in order to put that in the, in the, um, in the file with regard to that. And then the final thing is that we continue to receive, and we seem to be unindated by open record requests, uh, I've, uh, Ms. James and I have talked about that, and she's going to be sending you copies of every open records request that we're getting, so that you're just aware of what the volume is, to determine whether or not there may need to be additional personnel employed in order to, to respond to these, so. And that is all I have. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Councilwoman Cobble?
I just wanna say, um, the career fair that we had on Saturday, along with collaboration with our cultural exchange, breakfast was a big, big success, we had several hundred people there, and, uh, several people were offered jobs and received jobs on the spot, and we'll be having another one in about six months, but I also want to thank our mayor and our assistant city couns, uh, city, uh, manager for their support in being there representing the great city of Stonecrest, so thank you for your support. Go, Clinton.
Uh, let me just, I might be still in the, might be still in the mayor's thunder a little bit, but on next Thursday, DeKalb County is having an open house, uh, the historic DeKalb County Courthouse, about splosh, and I think we get caught up in our own splosh, we forget that, uh, DeKalb County will still benefit the city of Stonecrest by way of splosh, so I'm just gonna participate, just to see what they are speaking of, my personal knowledge. And let me also mention that KIMO, that is, um, kindness in memory of others, there's an organization, uh, who, of people who have lost loved ones, and particularly some mothers who've lost, uh, children, and they have, as a way of relieving their pain, put together an organization where they commit acts of kindness, just, uh, random acts of kindness. So, you can expect to hear from them in the city of Stonecrest during the next, uh, seven days, it actually starts on Saturday, so they wanted to just pass that on and let you know, uh, be kind in memory of others.
Tomorrow, I have, um, my town hall meeting at six PM at the library, and if you can't make it tomorrow, on the twenty-first, I have a coffee and conversations at the Hilton. On August second, we have a smart innovative city readiness breakfast forum, um, is sponsored by Amazon executives, recruiters, and WePro, and two executive firms who are flying in from the Carolinas. On November third, from ten to three, we have a citywide kids' health festival and a fashion show, and we're gonna actually feature, um, youth entrepreneurs at that program, and right now, I think we're just about at capacity with people who said they will attend. Um, in October, we'll have our first coffee walk at the Arabia Mountain Park, and the proceeds will go to, um, Arabia Mountain, and then in September, we'll have our citizens' engagement forum and luncheon at the Stonecrest Library. That's the short list.
Okay. Um, the only thing I have is, uh, pretty much a question for, uh, city attorney and clerk. Um, I wanna entertain how we change go about these, um, in the hearings for public comments. Um, can we institute a, a, a certain limit for, um, individuals that, that speak for or against, you know what I mean by that?
Do what?
Can we, can we have a limit with regards to, um, I'll give you an example, when you go to DeKalb, for or against, you get two minutes, that's, that's it, is, I mean, it's a ten-minute time limit, but you personally, you, you stop at two minutes. What we end up doing, whether it's for or against, um, other than the applicant, of course, um, is nine minutes of nonsense. So, it, it, two minutes.
Well, you know, as long as it meets the zoning procedures law, which that would, you can do that, um, but you would need, if you, if it's, if it's ten minutes, then you would need to give the applicant ten minutes.
Sure, yeah, I get that.
All right.
No, yeah, no worries about that, and it's their choice to either yield or, or not yield with regards to when they...
Well, they make their presentation and then have more, you know, then they can have others that would come up and, and speak in behalf, and if you wanna limit it by two minutes...
Yeah.
On each one, it's fine, too, I mean, if you, if you go back and read our procedures on the comment period, it's a two-minute limitation, but I think we, we use what, three? Three minutes? So, we're not, you know, been more than liberal on that.
So, my, my question for you is, how do we institute that?
Uh, we changed the policy.
Okay.
Since I was reading it today, I know right where it is.
[laughing]
So, I don't, you know, I mean, what, you know, whatever the pleasure of, of council is, um, but it would, it would mean that they would have to, council would also have to vote on it, approve it.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, my intent is not to stifle anybody, my intent is really just to be, you know, fair across the board, and everybody, you know, give everybody a chance to speak, even if those want to or don't want to, um, but that's, that's, uh, I want council to think about that, to get a look at that. Okay?
I'd suggest we put it on the next workshop agenda.
Good deal.
And then talk about it.
Okay. Uh, I'll take a motion, Jim.
I move.
All right.
Say.
All right, all in favor?